Thank you.
At six o'clock, Mr. Taylor.
Okay. Thanks, Mel. I'd like to call this March 3, 2025 Executive Meeting to Order. So can you take roll, please?
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Elliott? Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Ms. Hart? Ms. Williams? Ervita, you are muted.
Thought we see you.
I do see that Ms. Williams is here.
Okay.
Regardless, Mr. Chair, you do have a quorum.
Very good. Okay, does everybody had a chance to review the minutes of our last executive meeting, February 3? So do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
Okay, is there any questions or corrections in the minutes? All right, if not, could I have a vote on if all those approved for the minutes signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes, and nays? No nays, ayes have it, minutes are approved. We have a nominating committee report. Todd, would you like to give us that report, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Taylor. The nominating committee met on February 27 to go over our nominations and vote upon the vacancy of Vice Chair created by Mr. Luke Cunningham resigning. And the committee has nominated Sandy Hancock. It was voted upon and passed, approved for that. So I'd like to call for a vote on the commission for to approve that nomination.
Okay, and the nomination is for Vice Chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation of the nominating committee and the vote that they had for a nomination and a selection of Sandy Hancock for Vice Chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Nay? Ayes have it. Is that accepted by you, Mel? Or do we need to take a hand count?
I guess Sandy, did you vote in the affirmative or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if I should vote or not.
I think you're permitted to vote for yourself.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, congratulations, Vice Chair.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much for stepping up to take that position. And now we've got our monthly education. We've got a presentation on ethics by the planning department staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Peter Grimes. I mean, all of you know me, but we do have a good one for you. I think you're going to really enjoy this topic. I mean, and I will be talking about planning ethics for your monthly education. Namely, we're going to show how the American Institute of Certified Planners Code of Ethics and Professional Conduct can assist you as planning officials. I'd like to note that hopefully you had a chance to review the copies of the code that were included in your packets. Those will be some use later on in the education session, so keep that in mind. We're going to start by providing some background and history of the code, then we'll spend some time discussing the components of the code. And we'll talk about specifically the code's aspirational principles, which I think in a lot of ways are the most useful for y'all as planning commissioners. We'll talk about the code's rules of conduct. What available resources are available to you for adjudicating potentially unethical behavior? And then finally, the presentation will conclude with an activity to test your fortified knowledge of planning ethics. We're going to pose two scenarios from the APA's Ethics Case of the Year program, with both of those situations are modeled on real-life planning dilemmas. So with that, I mean, why don't you kick us off?
Okay, good evening, Commissioners. Today we're talking about the AICP Code of Ethics. So as professionals or people with a job, you know, we find ourselves in complex relationships or faced with different scenarios that we wonder what the right decision is or what are the right actions that should do? And of course, without rules and regulations, there's no crime and everyone will act in a manner that pleases them. So to cover these professional and advisory bodies have a rule of conduct or bylaws that you plan commissioners have that protect and guide their members, and it's no difference in the field of planning. So AICP means the American Institute of Certified Planners, and this code is specifically designed to guide ethical decision-making of AICP planners and other planning officials, including planning commissioners as they navigate challenging scenarios and relationships. I know planning commissioners are wondering, but I'm not a planner. How does this relate to me? Well, it does. You know, as planning commissioners, you guys play a very important role in the planning process. And so the Code of Ethics emphasizes fairness, equity, and social justice. Thus, provide good guidance on ethical responsibilities towards the public, ensuring that decisions are fair, transparent, and in public interest. Also, as planning commissioners, as representatives of the community, you must act with integrity and uphold public trust. The code also else prevents conflict of interest, which is a common issue across a broad spectrum. Your bylaws, like section five, six, and seven of your bylaws talk extensively on conflict of interest. And so we're going to espouse more on this later in the presentation. And finally, the knowledge of this code of conduct will help planning commissioners and staff collaborate better. You know, when planning commissioners understand AICP code, we can better collaborate with planners and uphold the same ethical standards. So just a brief history of the code so you can understand how it was born. The American City Planning Institute of Planners was founded in 1917 and was renamed in 1939. In 1948, AIP adopted a code of professional conduct for planners. The AIP was the forerunner of the AICP. And then following consistent provisions, the code eventually became the current AICP Code of Ethics and Professional Conduct. This AICP Code of Conduct have been revised three different times in 2005, 16, and 2021 to address new challenges and societal expectations and also reflect our needs as professionals in the evolving planning environment. Next slide, please. So the Code of Ethics organized into five different sections with three different purposes. The first purpose is contained in section A, which is the aspiration principles for all those who participate in the planning process. And this generally talks about the goals that planners, the planning commissioners, and other planning process players should strive to achieve. The second purpose is the rules of practice and behavior to which all members of the AICP are held accountable. And these sections are contained in section B. These rules are informed by section A, that's the special principles. Then the third one is the rules of practice and behavior, which is contained in section C. The procedure for enforcement of rules of practice and procedure, which is contained in sections C, D, and E. This includes advisory opinions, adjudication of complaints of misconduct, and discipline of members. We're going to spend more time on aspirational principle because this is more applicable to planning commissioners.
So our primary obligation as planners and active participants in the planning process is to serve the public interest. The code's aspirational principles help those engaged in the planning process to maintain a high standard of integrity, proficiency, and knowledge. The principles are as follows. People who participate in the planning process shall continuously pursue and faithfully serve the public interest, do so with integrity, work to achieve economic, social, and racial equity, safeguard the public trust, and improve planning knowledge and increase public understanding of planning activities. As you've seen in your copy of the code, the code does provide guidance for how to achieve these aspirational principles, including but certainly not limited to considering the long-range consequences of past and present actions, exercising fair, honest, skilled, informed, and independent professional judgment, and ensuring that people have the opportunity for meaningful and informed participation in the development process. Specifically, to avoid conflicts of interest, planning officials should disclose to the public all personal and pecuniary interests. Avoid private communications with planning process participants if the discussions relate to a matter over which that official or professional has authority to make a binding final determination, and they should abstain from official action that may be influenced by personal and/or professional relationships.
So yeah, so we're going to talk about section B, the rules of conduct. The AICP Code of Ethics has 24 rules that are grouped into seven that are the slide. Planners are held accountable to these rules, and they understand that the institute will enforce compliance with these rules. We'll focus on the three in bold, which are the conflict of interest, improper influence/abuse of position, and discrimination/harassment. So the first one, which is the conflict of interest. Planning commissioners shall not accept compensation or any other advantage that may be pursued as related to your office or employment. Do not get yourself involved in a job that will result in the possibility of personal or financial gain, except if permission is given by the client or employer. And full disclosure of the potential conflicts is made on public record at every public meeting and in all reports related to the work. Improper influence/abuse of position. Planning commissioners are not supposed to discuss matters that have authority on in private communications with planning process participants and are not supposed to use the power of any office to seek special advantage. That is not a matter of public knowledge, no public interest. Planning commissioners should not discriminate nor ignore and not ignore an act of such behavior. So for this one, planning commissioner, so the major takeaway for this section is the for planning commissioners right now, kind of like group into two, please next slide. So the major takeout here for planning commissioners, you could seek informal advice from the ethics officer. Informal advice includes questions about whether specific conduct conforms to the Code of Ethics and Professional Conduct. To do this, you should contact the ethics officer to arrange a time to discuss the issue. Planning commissioners should note that this advice will not be given orally, but the ethics officer will keep a record of the issue raised and advice given. Another takeaway for planning commissioners, please go back to the previous slide. Another takeaway for planning commissioners here is any planning commissioners could file a complaint against a certified planner. Emphasis on certified planner. And for now, this includes Jacob, Mel, Paul, Peter, and me. The form is available online on the AICP website. If you need to include your contact information, so the ethics officer, we know with whom to follow if there's any questions. And planning commissioners may recall when I said earlier that planners are held accountable to the rules of conduct. Hence, one fundamental question in the form, why fill in online, is that what what ethic role was violated from section B particularly? So other ethical dilemmas can be brought to the county councilor's office for advisement. So yeah, just like a summary of it is case by topic areas in 2023. As you can see from the slide, almost 40% of the cases were about conflict of interest and integrity. And to the right of the screen, you can see the map of the United States, and Missouri had recorded just one out of 21 cases in our region. Yeah, electoral region four.
All right, we've arrived to the fun part of the presentation. So if you are able to get the code in front of you, I think that will be really helpful. Like I said at the top, I'm going to pose two scenarios from the 2024's Ethics Case of the Year training. I'll give you a few moments to primarily review the aspirational principles. And if you have time, look at the Code of Conduct in section B to see what ethical principles and rules of conduct apply to the scenarios and what you think the most ethical outcome is, and then we'll kind of talk as a group. So the first scenario is a planning commissioner lives in and serves the city of Plantopia. The planning commissioner is concerned about a request for change of zoning that would impact the commissioner's neighborhood. The commissioner is interested in submitting comment about the petition at public hearing. What ethical principles and rules of conduct are pertinent to this scenario, and what is the most ethical outcome? So like I said, take a couple of minutes to review, and then we'll touch base. Does anyone have a aspirational principle or rule of conduct that they could point to that might help navigate this particular situation?
I'll comment on it.
Thank you, Keith.
If this was in your backyard, if this is my backyard, and if something I felt really, I don't agree with in 100%, I'd have to relieve myself from the commission while this is going on and this change of zoning would be presented. I'd also, if I was going to come to the petition once again, as a commissioner, relieve myself while this planning change or, you know, the zoning change would happen. And not talk to anybody on the planning committee about it. Wouldn't be my place to go and try to persuade anybody to vote yes or no on it if it was in my backyard. In other words, if this was something that a builder wanted to put in there, and I was highly against it, then I would have to abstain from any comments, any votes, or anything on it, especially if I was planning on coming and talking against it.
Great. That's great insight. Anybody else?
Would this fall under the improper influence and abuse nine, 10, 11, 12 of, you know, exchanging in private communications with the planning participant kind of behind the scenes? I would think that would be would come into play.
Yeah, I think that's definitely good insight. Anybody else? If you could click ahead, we have, so we picked out a couple. So from aspirational principles, you know, here are some of the principles that might help navigate this situation that planners and those involved in the planning process should exercise fair, honest, skilled, informed, and independent professional judgment, that they should abstain from official action that may be influenced by personal and/or professional relationships, and disclose to the public all personal and pecuniary interests. And then next, from the code of conduct, public officials should not accept from anyone any compensation, commission, rebate, or any other advantage that may be perceived as related to public office or employment. And public officials shall not fail to disclose the interests of their client or employer when participating in the planning process. So I think it's a good scenario to think about when conflicts of interest kind of can come into play and how they need to be navigated during the planning process. Okay, for our second one, I think this one's even more fun. A senior planner in Plantopia, so put yourself in our shoes, must review a large development project proposal and prepare a staff report. The planner identifies several issues and includes them in the staff report. The developer asks the director of planning to remove some of the recommended changes and conditions. The planner is reluctant to make those changes and is apprehensive about the planner's name being on the report. The director of planning insists that the planner make the requested changes. Ultimately, the planner requests for the planner's name to be removed from the report. What ethical principles and rules of conduct are pertinent to this scenario? What is the most ethical outcome?
So unless, Peter, should the, it would make sense, right, for the right thing to do for the planner's name to be taken off of that? And would you communicate the reason why to the parties involved?
I mean, that's definitely a potential outcome. Is there any particular principle or code of conduct that might help you make that particular decision as the best way to address the situation? I think this one is a little bit more ambiguous, a little less cut and dry. So definitely, it's not a test by any means.
And I'll tell you, this is on the test. The AICP test, the exam we take to become certified planners. And ethics seems straightforward because we are all ethical people. But when it's, when you do feel like you're being tested this way, it's like, oh, man, it isn't just black and white. So don't feel like, you know, it's challenging for all of us.
And in a recent training, we, some staff participated with. I feel like this was one of the more divisive scenarios that was kind of discussed in the room, too.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I mean, it's just to be honest, I had a computer problem, so I don't have the ethics in front of me.
Okay, sure.
It just seems to me that if you work for the director of planning as an employee, you have to take direction. You know, although if you feel like there's some ethical issues with how the director of planning is proceeding, then you have to have a method to go around them to have a third party be involved. And I don't know if that's counsel or an ombudsman or the person above the director. You know, I'm not sure who that is, but it just seems that there has to be a way to resolve ethical issues if you're concerned that it's an ethical issue when you have an employee employer relationship.
I'll jump in because I by and large agree with you, Sandy. My role as the chief planning officer for St. Louis County is ultimately everything that you all receive, yes, while staff prepares it. If the buck has to stop somewhere, the buck does absolutely stop with me as the chief planning officer. But if staff ever had concerns that they found that I was acting in an unethical manner, they definitely have multiple avenues by which they can, by which they can bring those concerns forward. So yes, I largely concur with. And when I was in the, at the conference and they brought this one up, this was my, this was my stance on it as well. So if we can move ahead unless somebody has some other ideas. So some principles that may apply is that planners and planning professionals should provide timely, adequate, clear, accessible, and accurate information on planning issues to all affected persons, to governmental bodies, to the public, and clients and decision-makers. That they should facilitate the exchange of ideas and ensure that people have the opportunity for meaningful, timely, and informed participation in the development plans and programs that may affect them, and that they should exercise fair, honest, skilled, informed, and independent professional judgment. And then from the code of contact, conduct, public officials or employees shall not deliberately fail to provide adequate, timely, clear, and accurate information on planning issues, and that public officials or employees shall not direct or pressure other professionals to make analyses or reach findings not supported by available evidence. And thus concludes our train on planning ethics. Hopefully you guys found it interesting and fun.
So Peter, a question for you. So if, when is appropriate time to bring a conflict up? You know, the beginning of a project, when it's going to be voted upon? When is the right time for that?
I assume you're talking about from your perspective as a planning commissioner.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
From the moment, go ahead, Peter.
Oh, no, you go ahead, Jacob.
From the moment that you find out that you may have any form of a conflict of interest is the moment that you would disclose said conflict. And I believe your bylaws also lay out the process by which you would do so, both in writing and then ultimately the recusal of yourself from the meeting. If it's in person, even leaving the room, or if it was a meeting like this, you would recuse yourself and exit, exit the WebEx until the deliberations are done. But it is from the moment that you realize that you have a conflict of interest in any action that comes in front of you.
Got you. Thank you.
Oh, Keith, you're muted. I see your mouth moving, though.
Are we have any more questions for Peter or Jacob? If not.
Good job, you guys.
Appreciate it. Thanks for voting.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Next, I guess we're going to hold business and letters for approval. From PC 02-25 May Commercial Properties.
Evening commissioners. This is PC 02-25 May Commercial Properties. This is a request for an amended C8 plan commercial district for, to permit a dental laboratory and all C6 office and research service district permitted uses. This is a 1.09 acre tract on the northwest corner of the intersection of Sulfur Spring Road and Arbor Spring Drive. This site is in Midwest County and is on the aerial bounded in red. And this letter of recommendation is consistent with the planning commission's decision on February 3rd.
Okay, so this is a letter going to the county council for approval? Do I have a motion for approval?
Some of.
Motion to.
Is there a second? Second? Okay, there's been a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Ayes have it. So approved. We have two not ready for action and we can go to correspondence.
All right, this is PC 24-84 Pennsylvania Glass Sand Corporation. This is the submission of the 2024 annual report as required by CUP number 489. This is a 323.39 acre tract on the north, north side of Highway 66, south of I-44 and east of the city of Pacific. So the site is in far west county and is on the aerial bounded in red. On the larger aerial, you can see the whole quarry and the city of Pacific to the west. As required in CUP number 489, US Silica must submit an annual report to the planning commission, the Department of Public Works and the Department of Public Health describing the status of proposed quarry operations. So they, this year they excavated 463,000 tons of raw material and are proposing continued excavation on the north side of the southeast quarry. So I have it in an orange arrow. The anticipated life of the quarry depends on the demand, so four years prior to any additional stripping and then additional years after that. The only thing that the planning commission must do is receive and file this.
So that just you calling to receive and file it, Mr. Taylor, would be sufficient.
Okay, well, then we received and filed this for approval. REPC 94-05 Quick Trip Corporation.
PC 94-05 Quick Trip Corporation is a request for amending seat ordinance 22,000 on 636 as amended. The currency used on site is Quick Trip Convenienced with gas pumps on a tract size of 2.02 acres located in the west side of Telegraph Road approximately 550 feet south of Fodder Road. Site is located in the South County from the county context map and the right of the screen is the side outlined in red. And this is a larger area of the site surrounded by commercial and residential development. So the request is to allow an electronic message and remove the condition requiring monument style signs. And the seat ordinance permits, permitted signs in accordance with the regulations of the seat to shopping districts. One monument style sign was permitted on site and no electronic message was permitted. So in 2006, the Board of Zoning Adjustment granted a variance to maintain a height of 12 feet in lieu of eight feet, not in limited visibility. And then in 2016, another variance was granted to maintain that height of 12 feet. So this is the existing, to the left of the screen is the existing sign on site and to the right is what they are proposing currently. So staff recommending approval because allowing the electronic priser aligns with today's technology, making real-time updates easier and cost effective. And this also provides consistency and bring the sign on the site to compliance. So therefore, staff recommending that amendment to the ordinance goes as this. And sign shall be permitted in accordance with the regulation or section 1003.168 of the Central East County Zone in Ordinance pertaining to the seat to shopping districts including setbacks. All of this will be deleted and then we're going to include freestanding signs shall not exceed 12 feet in height.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the department. Do I have a motion for approval?
I have a question.
Yes.
So are you saying there would still just be one sign? It's just that the numbers would be electronic instead of, I guess, manual?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay, I believe we had a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? Ayes have it. Next, we have REPC 13-03 Quick Trip, number 678.
PC 13-03 Quick Trips, number 678, is a request for amending seat ordinance since 1,0389. The currency on site is a Quick Trip Convenienced with gas pumps on a tract size of 1.48 acres located in the west side of Tesson Ferry Road approximately 50 feet north of Prince Gare Road. The site is located in the South County and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. And this is a larger area. So the request is to allow an electronic message and remove the condition requiring monument style sign. The seat ordinance permitted signs in accordance with the regulations of the seat to shopping districts. It permitted one monument style sign and no electronic message was permitted at that time. In 2016, the BZA granted a variance to permit a height of eight feet, 10 inches in lieu of eight feet, a price sign of 30 square feet in lieu of 20 square feet, a business sign of 96 square feet in lieu of 75 square feet, and the location of the price sign next to the identity sign. So this is the existing sign elevation and this is what they are proposing. Staff recommending approval because allowing the electronic priser aligns with today's technology, making real-time updates easier and cost effective. It also provides consistency and break the sign on the site to compliance. And as such, the recommended text amendment to the site is as follows. Sign shall be permitted in accord with the regulations of section 1003.168 of the Central East County Zone in Ordinance pertaining to the seat to shopping districts including setbacks. And then we're going to include freestanding sign shall not exceed 10 feet in height.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the department. Do I have a motion for approval, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been a first and a second. Are there any questions? Okay, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? Ayes have it. Motion approved for recommendation. Next, we have site plans. PC 34-88 JH Barra Construction.
Good evening. This is PC 34-88 JH Barra Construction Company. This is a request for a site plan approval on a C8 plan commercial district. It's a 1.46 acre tract on the north side of Lindbergh Boulevard, 400 feet west of LeMay Ferry Road. So this site is in South County and on the aerial is bounded in red. So the developers, the developers are proposing the removal of the existing multi-tenant retail space and the replacement of it with a Chase Bank with drive-through. So the other building on the property is the Lindbergh building and that will be staying in place. Here's some elevations and some landscaping. Department is recommending approval.
Okay, I've heard the department's recommendation. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, are there any questions?
Um, this is Sandy. I'm a little confused where on the property if the Lindbergh building is going to stay. Where is the Lindbergh property?
You can see it, it's where it says existing five-story building with basement. On this sheet, it is on the right side.
Okay.
So you can see the overhang as well since.
This was the one level, commercial building that was next door to it. It was the furniture store and I think Penn Station was in there before.
So the Lindbergh building itself is coming down?
No.
No, that is staying. There were always two buildings on this parcel.
I'm still, I'm still confused.
Go back to the aerial or the slide with the aerial abbey.
So what was in the spot where the new bank is going?
So on this aerial, you can see it was a multi-tenant retail strip. And it was, it's oriented in a different way than the Chase Bank building would be oriented.
I see. Okay, I understand. Thank you.
We had a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? Ayes have it and a recommendation for approval has been passed. Next, we have PC 27-23 Real Estate Partners X LLC.
This is PC 27-23 Real Estate Partners X LLC. This is also a site plan approval in the C8 plan commercial district on a 9.47 acre tract in the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Lindbergh Boulevard and East Concord Road. This site is also in South County and is on the aerial bounded in red. So the developer is proposing reutilizing the existing weekends-only building for a Dogwood Social and club fitness and the addition of a new multi-tenant retail strip closer to Lindbergh Boulevard. Or, yeah. There's some lighting plans and landscaping. This is elevations of the existing building on the site. And these are the proposed elevations of the new outbuilding. The department is recommending approval of this one as well.
Okay. Do we have a motion for approval?
Some of.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any questions?
Yes. So you've looked at the parking calculations for this?
Yes, so we've, they, they are able to have a 20% reduction because of the shared uses.
Okay.
And they do meet that.
Okay.
So what's going in the weekends-only building again? Is this what they had planned before?
Um, I don't believe it's what they had planned before. Right now, it's, it's going to be the Dogwood Social plus club fitness, which is a gym.
And if the, if the commission remembers at public hearing, there originally was, a portion of it was going to be self, a self-storage facility. They have completely removed the self-storage facility. The, the Dogwood Social sizes remain, has remained constant. So the previous iteration was retail and self-storage and the new design is a, a gym in lieu of the retail and self-storage in addition to the Dogwood Social.
On the right-hand side of the building is where the club fitness is going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jake, Jacob, how did the pickleball courts work, get worked out? Is that still the same?
They're just not there anymore.
No pickleball courts?
No pickleball.
Pickleball.
Right, after all that conversation about noise and they, they took it off, so.
Okay, you gotta go work out instead at the club fitness.
Any other questions? So we have a first and a second on a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Nay? Ayes have it. Recommendation approved. And now we're going to go to the order. And our, I guess we're going to have a report about the steering committee meeting. Peter, are you going to do that?
No formal report. We just wanted, for the commissioners, I know several commissioners were there, but for the commissioners who weren't there, we had a pretty successful steering committee meeting where we broke out into small groups and dove into some of the specific policy recommendations by sort of thematic bucket. So things like complete communities, inclusive economies, sustainable infrastructure, those were the three breakout groups we had. So each had a facilitator from the consultant team, members of county staff, and then, you know, steering committee members. Dr. Page kicked it off, which is always really enjoyable. I think the steering committees really, steering committee members get a lot out of, you know, seeing his, his continued involvement in the plan as well. So I'll, I'll leave it open to Jacob if you want to add anything or any of the commissioners who were there, if you want to share some of your, your takeaways.
Jacob, you want to go first?
So in my, in the room that I was in, I thought that the conversation was really great. Lots of conversation about the, just the depth of the recommendations to date. And it was just a really robust conversation, so.
I, I will comment about the same. The breakout group I was in, I think we got into about four of our topics that we had there to talk out of about 10 or 12. So we probably could have used some more time. We just got too far into, you know, too deep in the weeds. And should have maybe moved on a little quicker, but it was, it was very, very good, very informal about what, what's going on and what you guys have included in the plan. Pretty good. How about you, Todd?
Oh, I was in there with, with Jacob and Paula. Yeah, and it went very well and you know, the more questions you ask leads to more questions and, you know, I thought it was a great conversation and you know, still a big, big task ahead of, I guess, of whittling these down to, you know, what are, what are manageable, you know, to, to make some differences. So I, I enjoyed the conversation. A lot of people were involved in open talking, so very, very beneficial.
How about you, Paul?
I don't have anything else to add.
Was there anybody else there out of the commissioners? Oh, Chris, Chris, you were there, weren't you?
Yeah, I didn't break off into the group, so.
Okay. Alrighty.
Hervetta, did you make it into a group?
I made it into a group, but I was moving around.
Yeah, I helped her out, too.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was moving around a lot. But what I could hear was good conversation that there's someone named, what is her name? I guess she's part of the steering committee. I can't think of her name. She just had a lot of good insights and questions.
We've got a good group, yeah.
Nicole, was that her?
Oh, was it Nicole Murphy? Were you in the, the group with her?
Yeah.
Chris Peoples from GRG, I think, was up in there.
Nicole, yeah. She had a lot of good comments. I was just moving around. I jumped in just a little bit at the end and said, yes. Yes, oh, yes, 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 yes. So I didn't get a chance to really participate in a lot of comments.
Sandy, did you, did you have anything to add?
No, I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, I saw you were unmuted and wanted to make sure, but to what you said, Keith, you know, we kind of foresaw, like, we were never going to be able to nail down the exact right amount of time to, to, you know, facilitate because we, we wouldn't have been surprised if one group had only talked about one policy for the, for the whole time and.
Well, I think it was best how you had it because it was, you know, plenty of time.
Yeah, yeah, we think it was.
Pretty good, good meeting. If I think it was stretched to me, not any, any longer would have been too long.
We thought it was really successful. And then the other, just 2050 generally, next, we're doing similar exercises, but with more like stakeholder groups, whether that's other county departments or community groups. And then we're in preparations for our April open houses where we'll have a lot of these policies and in the actual draft plan for the public to see. So we have that to look forward. and in the actual draft plan for the public to see. So we have that to look forward to. Any questions I can answer or we can answer about?
Or, or will you send out an email with the locations where?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we are going to do them at county libraries, so that'll be, um, they've been a great partner through this, doing our, some of our engagement stations and, and such, so we'll make sure we get that out to y'all soon. This week.
That, committee meeting?
Say again?
I just wanted to ask, anybody else have any comments on, on the meeting? I take that as a no.
And then we get to the most important agenda item of the entire meeting. Thank you all for your patience and your, your grace as, um, we've brought our office supervisor Marilyn on board. One of the ta- tasks she's learning now is how to pay out those commission stipends. So you've not been forgotten. Um, they are coming. Fear not, uh, but that's why they hadn't come out yet. So I apologize that we didn't make that communication a little more clear in advance.
I thought you were going to give everybody a raise, no?
You know, come talk, you can come talk at council about how important it is to compensate our volunteer, um, you know, our, all our board members and commissioners and the critical volunteer role they play, you know, that stipend is basically your gas money.
That's right.
Print your, print your papers and whatnot, so it is, it is coming.
Okay. Well, thanks. Thanks for that information. All right, uh, well, does anybody else have anything they'd like to discuss?
Yeah, I do, Keith. This is Mr. Elliott.
Hi, Gary.
After, um, careful consideration, I've decided this is going to be my last meeting as a commissioner. I appreciate the opportunity to serve on the board for, I think, ten years, and, um, good luck to y'all.
Well, Gary, I, I think you're going to have to send us a, a letter of recognition and.
I'd rather not send a letter. You, everybody's here, everybody heard it, and.
Well, I hate to see you leave. And it's, 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 uh, been fun having you on the board. I'll, I'll say that.
I appreciate that. I've got some personal issues going on in my life right now that I think I need to address.
And I think everybody would understand that, you know, you're, uh.
Well, I mean, Mr. Elliott, I was, I'm completely shocked. I had no, I, I, um, really have appreciated your, um, your work on this commission. So, um, um, in the same regards as, as Mr. Cunningham, we will prepare, um, you know, thanking, uh, we'll have a, uh, an official thank you for you.
Well, I, I don't need that, Jacob. I just want to just go on with my life. I, I appreciate the offer, though.
Understood.
I don't want to make a big issue out of it. This is is goodbye and good luck.
Gary, I hate to see you go. I really do. We'll stay in touch, though, okay?
Okay.
I just want to echo what Jacob said as well, Mr. Elliott. It's, you know, it's been a real pleasure to, to work with you while you've been on the commission.
Let's put it this way, you made it exciting at the meetings. I know that.
You're irreplaceable, that's for sure.
All right, well, I know I'm gonna have to, uh, any, anybody else have a comment?
Just sorry to see you, Gary, and just start connecting with you again after all those many years, so good luck, my friend. Thank you.
Yeah, Gary, thanks a lot for everything that you've done, and, um, sitting next to you, got some good advice on how things operate, so just want to say thank you.
Alrighty. Well, uh, Gary, would you do us the honor of making a, a, a motion to adjourn the meeting then?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Okay. You've heard a, the first and the second, uh, and then to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nays? Eyes have it, and this meeting is adjourned, and we will see you, uh, next Monday on the tenth.
Yes, one week in person for public hearing.
In person, would that be at, at seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
Okay. Thank you very much, and we will.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Once again, thanks, Gary.